Welcome to the meeting of the Central Texas College District for the regular meeting, August 24th, 2021. Invocation will be led by trustee colleague, Feds allegiance by trustee Armstrong and the Texas Board trustee's baby.
Father, we do, Heavenly Father, we thank you for so many people who take us whatever, to thank you for your blessing. But as we gather here today, we thank you for the opportunity to manage the college, the business of Central Texas College, be the stewards of the money that we're blessed to have. And we ask for your guidance to make sure that we are always doing things pleasing to you. We ask you to take the lead in this meeting, so that there is nothing but respect, honor, a sense of integrity, and commitment to you. We love you, Lord, and most importantly, we love us. Your blessings we ask and receive from your sentience.
Amen.
Please join me in honoring our flag and our nation, in our allegiance.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberity, justice, for all.
Please join me in the Texas flag.
I'm with the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We have a quorum present, and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may access the meeting as follows. Just go to the Central Texas College website. First item on the agenda is consider approval of amendments to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on July 27th, 2021. Copy of that has been signed to you in your read-ahead packet. Any questions on the minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion will be approved.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is the chairman's update, an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest, with a presentation limited to three minutes. Is there anyone present who would like to address the board? Seeing none, then we'll move to the next item, which is chancellor's report.
Before we get into the items, I'd like to acknowledge that we have a number of visitors here today. Glad to see people here. Group of retirees, some faculty, department chair, and staff. So, thank you for attending. First on the agenda, a letter of commendation to Officer Brianne Bass. General Weaver will make the presentation. Chief, have you and Officer Bass would come up?
Officer Bass, if you'll join me over here.
Yes, good afternoon. I just want to take a few moments to recognize Officer Bass for her work. We know that in law enforcement, sometimes we don't always get the recognition that we deserve. And Officer Bass has only been with us eight months, and during her eight months, she's done an exceptional job. We're giving her this letter of commendation by General Weaver, and I just want to summarize what she did on that day. Like, on June 14th, she spotted a female at the Bell Tower Bridge. This young lady was going to jump off the bridge and commit suicide. Officer Bass was able to approach her calmly, talk to her, and draw her away from the bridge and into safety. She even took her, we, she was able to give her the assistance. We took her to the hospital and everything. But, again, just the courage that she had, her bravery to save someone's life, because she did save someone's life. No doubt in my mind, she saved her life, because she was contemplating, and she was even saying, "I'm going to jump, because I don't want to live no more." But I just want to recognize her here in front of the board and the community for her efforts in doing this. And thank you, Officer Bass, for your service.
Next item, applied Texas Advisory Committee appointment. Dr. Garrett.
Ms. Williams, will you come join me? Y'all have met Ms. Williams before. She did a presentation a couple months ago, or was it last month? I don't remember. Last month, yes. And I wanted to recognize her. She has been selected to participate in the Applied Texas Advisory Committee for the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. This is a two-year appointment by the commissioner to serve as an advisory member, helping the coordinating board ensure that the application for students to come to college works for the community colleges and for the student, and make updates to that. This is a very, very important position that she's been selected to participate on, or board, and we're very pleased that she will be representing Central Texas College on this board. In addition to that work, though, she's a very busy lady. She is the Director of Admissions and Recruiting, by the way, at CTC. But in her off time, she serves as, on the Quality of Life Board in Coppice Cove, and this is her second term there, as well as a coach for youth volleyball. So she's very busy representing CTC in many ways, because we know that that youth volleyball, those kids, are coming to CTC, aren't they? Yes. So please, please recognize the work that Amy is going to be doing for us at the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board.
I'd like to thank Amy and Dr. Garrett for the hard work they do. You know, Dr. Garrett and I worked behind the scenes with the coordinating board, Dr. Keller, to hopefully get some of these appointments. And I know many of the faculty and staff are on committees there to serve, and that brings things back to us. So, thank all of you for that. A check presentation by the Retiree Association, Dr. Carter. Do you want to accept that? And who is going to present for the retirees' association? Okay, come forward. I think all of them are coming. Okay, now we have videos and pictures of the month. Soon as Barbara gets finished taking their picture. Thank you.
I guess I'm gonna get my steps in today.
Okay.
Okay, so, I wanted to, actually, Dr. Garrett wanted us to kind of recognize some folks that have been doing a lot, not necessarily behind the scenes, but on the internet, to keep us in the forefront of our students. And one of them is here now, and Bruce is in a board meeting, so hopefully he'll be here soon. But Marcella Vargas, there in the back, please. And Bruce Bassblinder, very shortly after the pandemic started, we tried to figure out what we were going to do about things like student tours, and how we're gonna figure it out. And we figured out that we could use WebEx and record it, and stream it live to Facebook. So, I think that's probably 75% of what Marcella does in many weeks. It's become at least three to four videos a week. The first one, I want to show you a little clip, because I think it's important, if you haven't seen it, how the interchange goes between Marcella and Bruce, and whoever the presenters are, to kind of get the information that students need, and just the way that they do it, especially on this one. And this was our healthcare pathways session, is that last week? Yeah, that is part of new student orientation. And I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, but this is not going to go away now that we're fully open, because it's valuable, and I think a lot of students, this is the way they consume information. Whoops. Now I'm really messed up, Freddie. Okay. Okay. And finally, this one is just something I wanted to show you guys, because I almost cried when I saw it, so I guess women are emotional. But this is something that the Welcome Bash Committee, that Julie's folks are in charge of, and somebody on my staff, Janice Wright, put together, as kind of kicking off Welcome Week.
It's time! It's time to bring back the sport.
Time to start a new chapter.
It's time!
Time to get back to helping.
Back to protecting and serving.
Back to what we do best.
It's time!
It's time!
It's time to bring back the sport.
Time to get back in the cell.
Time to start a new chapter.
It's time!
Time to get back to helping.
Back to protecting and serving.
Back to what we do best.
It's time!
Time to get back in the classroom.
Right here, at home.
Or wherever home may be.
Time to get back to some of those who serve.
And those who need our services.
It's time to get back.
Back to life.
Back to living.
And back to learning.
Whether you're just getting started.
It's time.
To get back to CTC.
We opened with, in the campus center, and how crowded it was, and this room was almost completely full. And I don't know when the last time I've seen it full was. And this was some of the outside in Great Western doing their good work, serving hot dogs and other stuff. And then this was some examples of the academic departments and what they were doing. And that was the part that was hard to get around to. We went to go take pictures, and I didn't hit nearly maybe half of them. So, a lot of work, but worth it.
Thank you, Barb. We had a, I think I mentioned last Tuesday, there were four board members who were there. And thank you all for coming and sharing with us. Mr. Pierce, Mr. Beebe, Mr. Towers, Mr. Armstrong. We got, Nancy and I got around to every, we visited every faculty and staff person that was on campus, except for one that I missed, which is the one I really wanted to go to in the end, and that was over to registration to the enrollment center and see what was going on there. And I think something like 50 or 60-some students got registered for classes, so, thank you. Thanks, Barb. Police Academy, Dr. Edie.
Yes, good afternoon. You see a picture here of the cadets from the BPOC Charlie class. The class started in April, and it's finishing in September. In the picture, the cadets are taking the Emergency Vehicle Operators Course. And in order to complete that, they have to negotiate a timed backing course in under one minute, so they have to drive backwards. They also have to do precision driving in under four minutes. So, the cadet to the left is Joshua Hughes, and he's from the Mylum County Sheriff's Office. The man to the right of him is Officer, Police Officer Carl Trussell, who's helping teach the course. And then you see one of our instructor, Clifton Osborne, on the left side of the car. Let's see. All right, this here's a picture of an education briefing that was done on Fort Hood. So for, you know, almost the last year, Fort Hood did virtual sessions, just much like the ones that you just saw. But here, we had an invitation to go-to units. So, you see, you see, if you look real closely, you do see two civilians there, and those are Dean Jackie here from Fort Hood and Advisor Sharon Hughes. So, they went out, and they met with First Lieutenant Martin Martinez with the 74th Multi-Role Bridging Company, 62nd Engineer Battalion. And they were able to give an education briefing on Fort Hood. And as you can see, it was at the motor pool. So, soldiers were eager to find out more what we have to offer through Central Texas College. Let's see. And these two faces should be familiar to you. You see Ms. Dunn and Dr. Heath. They are both retiring at the end of this month, as the next week. Lavi Dunn has been at CTC since 1979, so she has over 40 years of service here at the college. She started off in different secretary positions, in financial aid, human resources, student services, and then became the app and assistant in the dean's office, started teaching part-time, and then in 2015, became department chair of Office Technology. And on the right, you see Dr. Heath. He started out in 2007 with Central Texas College as a part-time instructor. He taught on central campus, on Fort Hood, and various areas. He also, in the same years, Lavi Dunn, became department chair in 2015 of our Communications Department. So, great contributions that both of them have made to the college, and we wish them the best in retirement. Thank you.
Yeah, they, they didn't want to have any big going-away party, which we tried to get them to do, but they didn't want to do that. So, they came by yesterday and today, and I gave them a coin from the college, and thanked them for their years of service on behalf of the administration, the faculty, staff, and the Board of Trustees. So, if you see them, thank them, and hopefully they'll come back and teach part-time for us. But anyway, thank you, General Weaver. Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, chancellor. Next item on agenda, discuss and consider the July interim financial statement and investment reports. Mr. Liberty.
Hopefully, everybody has a copy of the financial statements for July. You know, briefly, the bottom line is up from last year. That's two reasons behind that. Number one, we have some federal dollars that we recognized and lost revenue from the CARES Act. But the second thing is, if you will remember, we've been through a pretty thorough tightening of the fiscal screws this year, and we've held back costs as hard as we could. So, we do have a positive bottom line, which is nice. And I can almost guarantee we'll have a bottom positive line, because, a positive bottom line, because we still have some additional CARES dollars that we're going to be able to recognize, number one. And number two, GASB-68, which we've been talking about for, seems like forever, but the last five or six years now, that sometimes affects our financial statements negatively and is out of our control. Those numbers came out from TRS, and we actually are not going to have any negative impact this year. So, those things, and finishing through the month of August and getting the audit finalized, will pretty surely bring us to a positive bottom line, which is pretty amazing in a year that we had a pandemic and our enrollments are down almost 20%. It's amazing that we've been able to hold costs sustainable, to keep our bottom line in the black. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Liberty? I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the interim financial statement for July. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is discussing, consider the adoption of the Central Texas College District budget for the fiscal year beginning September 1st, 2021, and ending August 31st, 2022. That document is number 229, revision 34. Mr. Liberty?
Yes, sir. I put in front of your seats the chancellor's budget message, which we did not have finalized at the workshop when we met last week. That is the only change to the budget document that we discussed last week. I did not receive, I received one phone call from Mr. Beebe, but it was, it was more of a clarification than an actual change or recommendation on anything, and I didn't have any discussions with anyone else. So, the administration is requesting your approval to the budget that you have in front of you.
Move, we approve it.
Second.
A motion been made and seconded to approve the adoption of our budget for 2021, '22. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
I just can't let this opportunity pass to compliment Mr. Liberty for his work, and those that have supported at CTC, and all the employees. And it behooves us to recognize the hard work that he has done in bringing this together, and also, all the nice things of Ms. Williams, the retirees, and the work that the other, the recognition that of our great people at CTC has really helped us through this year. And I will say thank you, and I thank the board agrees with me, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is discuss set approval of adopt of the ad valorem tax rate for the tax year of 2021. That's board document number 227, revision 36. Mr. Liberty?
Yes, sir. As we had mentioned at the public hearing earlier, the new rate that we are proposing is .1116 per hundred, which is the no-new-revenue rate that is down from the current rate of .1218. So, we have decreased our tax rate significantly. I'm not, I don't want it to get turned around to think it's only, only because we're great, which is part of it. But as we all know, appraisals went up significantly, and that has a major effect in what happens with your tax rate. But as a board, you all were on top of it from the moment we, we as an administration, started recommending that we would go with the no-new-revenue rate. And I will say, we are one of the only local taxing jurisdictions that are doing that. So, I'm proud of all y'all for making sure that happened. No sense kicking people while they're down, and this is a pretty tough, tough time that we're going through. So, the administration is definitely in favor of the recommendation of approving the rate at .1116.
Any questions, Mr. Liberty? I'll take a motion. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir.
Next item, discuss set approval of the exercise, the fourth option year of the Investment Advisory Services contract with Hilltop Holdings Incorporated. First period is September 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2022. Mr. Liberty?
Yes, sir. As we discussed last week at the workshop, this is the final option period of our investment advisory service with Hilltop, and they have performed exemplary and have held their costs in line for as long as we've had the contract with them. And the recommendation from the administration is that you approve the final option year.
Are any questions, Mr. Liberty? Ms. Colley?
You mentioned that...
Could you move a little bit closer to the mic? Can't hear you.
You mentioned that this company was very supportive, and they hadn't raised the rates, and so on and so forth. Will they be able to compete for the next, you say this is the last year on this particular agreement? Will they be willing to provide a...
Yes, ma'am. What we'll have to do, and I will probably start on that sometime close to the beginning of the calendar year, is we'll go out with a request for qualifications, because this is a professional services contract. There's nothing in the state There's nothing in the state statute that prohibits them from bidding again, so I fully expect them to bid. And I also fully expect them to hold the line in their prices. They, they deal with a lot of governmental entities, and they understand that we're all on pretty tight budgets. So I, I think we will receive another bid from them.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Now entertain a motion, then.
She'll move.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the Hilltop Holding for the next fiscal year. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is discuss and consider approval to issue a blanket purchase order to the vendors on the list of goods and services for purchases of fifty thousand dollars or more in the aggregate during the fiscal year of September the first, 2021, through August thirty-first, 2022. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm here to seek board approval of the fifty K list. If you recall from last week's workshop, the list authorizes administration to issue blanket purchase orders to vendors on the list of goods and services for purchases of fifty thousand or more in the aggregate during the fiscal year beginning September one, 2020, twenty-one, sorry. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Gonzalez? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
The motion been made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten is discuss and consider approval to exercise a section option period of the Heitz Lumber Contract for purchase of hardwood plywood products, buildings, grounds, and constructions-related products, and other specific building construction and related products for the period of September the first, 2021, through August thirty-first, 2022, with the spending not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, we reviewed this at the board workshop. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. You have the summaries for each of the four contracts that we're going to seek option period approval for. So with that, the administration recommends that the, that we approve to exercise a second option period for the Heitz Lumber Contract.
Any discussion? Any questions? Take a motion? Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven is discuss and consider approval of the exercise of the section option period of the Texas Materials Group Incorporated for asphalt milling, paving, repaving, repairing curbs, gutters, patching, cracks, and slurry road coat ceilings, and restriping for the September 2021 through August thirty-one, 2022, with this period, with spending estimates to not exceed sixty thousand dollars. This amount includes any major asphalt or paving cap for projects which would be required in separate board approval. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, so CTC recommends the approval to exercise a second option period of the Texas Materials Group contract.
Questions, Mr. Armstrong?
Some.
Motion is been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve is discuss and consider approval of the exercise of the second option period for Joel's Floors Job Order Contract Services for minor construction and maintenance repairs, alteration, and remediation. This contract is performed services for the recurring nature to include demolition, construction, and flooring services for the period of October the first, 2021, through September the third, 2022, with an estimate spending of three hundred thousand dollars. This amount includes any major projects which would require separate board approval. The total spent will not exceed one-point-five million over the life of the contract. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, CTC administration recommends the approval to exercise a second option year of the Joel's Flooring Job Order Contract.
Questions, Mr. Armstrong? I'll take a motion, then. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirteen is discuss and consider approval to exercise a section option period of wood environment counseling and services for environmental consultants for consulting and testing services, including hazardous materials management, in other words, asbestos, indoor air quality and mold and moisture services for the period of October the eleventh, 2021, through October the tenth, 2022, with spending estimates not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, again, CTC administration recommends that a contract be exercised for the second option period for wood environmental consulting.
Questions, Mr. Armstrong? Seeing no questions, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion been made, seconded, Mr. Armstrong. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fourteen is discuss and consider approval, the award of a contract to Ermid Nurseries and Garden Care in response to IFB number twenty-one dash zero-one-eight for nursery landscaping services, the amount of fifty thousand dollars, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars to be paid with insurance proceeds. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, so as we had mentioned before, that we have a significant amount of landscaping damage as a result of the storm back in February. This would allow us to proceed with those repairs, so CTC administration recommends that a contract be awarded to Ema Nursery and Garden Care for the required nursery and landscaping services.
Question, Mr. Armstrong? Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
She'll move.
Second.
A motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fifteen is discuss and consider approval to award a contract for Alliant Insurance Services for cyber security insurance in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, and to BKCW Insurance for firing range liability insurance in the amount of four thousand three, thirty dollars and eighteen cents for the period of September the first, 2021, through August thirty-first, 2022, with one correction, with four one-year option periods. Mr. Hickman?
All right. Good afternoon, Chancellor, members of the board. If you recall from last week, we did not have the bids yet for the cyber and the gun range liability insurance. We got those right after the workshop, and the committee has gone through them and determined which ones we think would be best for the college. And so the administration is recommending approval for Alliant for the cybersecurity and BKCW for the gun range. You have the, the paperwork in front of you, our board item.
Any questions, Mr. Hickman? Yes, sir.
What's the amount, please?
The amount is for cybersecurity, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, and for the firing range is four thousand thirty dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Well, I'll entertain a motion, then.
Move to approve.
Motion been made and seconded to approve. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item sixteen is discuss and consider approval of a request from Association United States Army, AUSA, in the amount of five thousand dollars for the benefactor level for sponsorship of the national meeting for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Stanivale?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, board of trustees. I'm here in accordance with CTC Board Document Four-Two-Seven, seeking your approval of, of the Association United States Army, selected by the sponsorship committee. And this organization provides CTC publicity, advertising, and highlights our contributions in their newsletters and online services to members. We seek your approval.
Questions, Mr. Stanivale? Yes, sir.
I move the approval, but I also want to say how much we appreciate the Army and what they do for us, especially locally but nationally also.
Second motion.
A motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seventeen is discuss and consider approval of sponsorship request from Central Texas Business Resource Center in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the fiscal year 2021 funds. Mr. Stanivale?
Again, board of trustees, I'm here today in accordance with CTC Board Document Four-Two-Second, Four Hundred Twenty-Seven, seeking your approval of the Central Texas Business Resource Center in which Central Texas College is in collaboration with the Workforce Solutions Center of Central Texas and the Greater Colleen. And again, this organization also provides Central Texas College publicity, advertising, and highlights our contributions in their online services and newsletters and web information. We seek your approval.
Questions, Mr. Stanivale? I'll take a motion. A motion been made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eighteen is discuss and consider approval of the chancellor's travel schedule as required in Board Document Number Three-Sixty-Seven, travel relocation and other reimbursement expenses, guidelines, procedures. Mr. Anopoulos?
Yes, sir. As I presented Tuesday, the one correction, if you will, on the first one, Community College Association of Texas Trustees, I'm not a board member. I'm just a, a member. The rest of them, as you can see, Association United States Army, AUSA, National League, I am a board member. Also, names, Hurdy South, Saks, and CCME. So this is my travel schedule for the first quarter, and seeking approval for that.
She'll move.
Second.
A motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nineteen is discuss and set a report on inter-local cooperability contract fees. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. This final item is, is a non-voting item. It's informational only. Every year, I, I provide this information about the local co-ops that we are part of. So in accordance with Texas Education Code, Section Forty-four point oh-three-one, the college is required to submit to the board of trustees an annual report identifying the amount, purpose, and disposition of any fees paid regarding cooperative purchasing programs. That should have been provided in your packets. As you can see, of the twelve, we only pay one fee, and that's to the state of Texas, which allows us to take part in the co-op programs that the state of Texas has. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Gonzalez? Now entertain a motion.
It's no motion, sir, no voting. It's just informational.
Say again?
It's just...
No more action required. That's just information, sir. That's our cooperative here. Okay. Mine's my fault. Item twenty is recommending topics for upcoming agenda items and announcements by board members. Let's start with Mr. Armstrong.
Oh, thank you. Pass.
Mr. Chairman, I want to just express appreciation for how smoothly board members go, board meetings go because of our workshop and discussion time, and I'm grateful for all the people that participate and present. Makes this day a lot easier. Thank you.
Mr. Beebe?
I don't understand.
Okay. And I agree that we've got a pretty good system worked out. When we get a chance to drag our knuckles in the dirt and have a workshop, that it makes it easier, I think, for everybody all the way around. If you're listening to this over the airwaves or looking at a TV, you might understand what we're talking about, but this is not a rubber-stamp organization. What we do is try to find out where money is being spent, what it's spent for, and we're getting the bang for our buck, so to speak. And thank goodness that we have the staff and faculty here, especially the, the staff that go out and do the work every day without question, knowing that we're here to back them up. And I think that makes for a very good organization working force, and I'm proud of every one of you, and I really appreciate what y'all do for the college and, and for the community as a whole. Item twenty-one is announcement of the time and location for the board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-first of September, and the board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of September. And I will not be present for the workshop on the twenty-first. Got a little vacation planned to go see Alaska, so. Reverend Towers, you can, you can be here, take care of that.
You have a cool country.
At this point, I'd ask the board to adjourn for an executive session. Eddie, would you unlock the door, please?
Well, that's a bit.
So, totally different. You just touched the western.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do my own thing. Well, I don't like Oregon. I don't like Oregon. Yeah, that's.
[laughing].
They know you're.
It starts by.
Is it?
I thought it was still like biology.
It is something.
It is something.
For me.
Yeah.
My book.
Still do.
But it's my book.
Yeah.
I put a double plug in. And I'm like, so, you know, because I know I have to get my. I'm like, okay, so where do you go then? And was he watching? Good.
I like the gratitude that you think I'm supposed to give you when I'm like.
Like a little.
That's why the dish was great. Thanks. Thanks for doing your. More than this, sir. We all have.
We're.
Didn't you surprise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of things.
Now, we've got. We work in. We work more. Low. Not well. Wasn't that mine? We were. We were going to the library. My one class. Then. We look more. Actually, I can't. But I can come in home. I can come in home and I'll. I'm living. I hope you're. Wow. Yeah. You just. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, my friend is not as working.
We got. She said.
But I'm working. I don't. She didn't have. She's been to a stove to the army board. I love.
I've heard about.
Remember when they. So. I know. It's like, but it does. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. Or they get. You know me. I like the hard life. No, I didn't want anybody to give me anything. It's in the chain. I can give the team. Um, I can see you. Yeah, let's wait. Yeah, a lot of everything. Yeah. See, he put me to work. See, I'm in there, I'm sweating, I'm thinking, oh, I'm doing this to stay fit. Yeah.
Question. Was something. Did they ever reopen there?
No. No, no, I didn't. I'm not. We already have the base, so you can kind of forage it. Yeah, I mean. Thanks.
Keep your place going.
I was. Yeah. Yesterday, yeah. I was the heavy. Yes. Thank you. Bye. Bye. That's your office. It's the first office I came to on campus. Thank you, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, we come together. Oh, there was. That's what I think. Pretty much. Over there. You there? He won't be. I know that. Crowd. Thank you. There's something. But I didn't. The last. On Tuesday, Tuesday. I'm. I called and I said. Waiting. It's like that. High school. Well, I mean, I need. I was. I have some. We did like. A lot of. Yes. And then this. Because that's. Unless they don't. When I was. And this is the guy that. Like, when he was our captain that night. And the central. So. Um, it's called. Well, it's. Everybody's throwing a good side to us. I don't know. He drove. And this is. I know. I thought. I came. And they. And this was. And it's straight. Something. Yeah, I guess if he was back then. So, that's what we can hide. Yes. No, but this is still live. Um. Maybe. But you were. We're. I got high. Yes. We got. Yeah. We're not put back there. She's. You know. They try that. I'm. You have been. Breaking. Check.
Hey, Michelle? Don't just check. Yeah. If anyone want to find their seats, please. Okay, we had an executive session. The topic of that executive session was offering a three-year contract to the Chancellor beginning September the first, twenty twenty-one, going to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion on that. Yes, sir.
I move the approval as stated by Chair Weaver.
Okay?
Second. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-two, on our agenda today is adjournment. If there's no more business for the board, then we stand adjourned.